The order, the February 21st, 2017 council meeting. You please stand for invocation and pledge of allegiance. I think it's Mr. Bobby, please.
Father God, we thank you for this day, Lord. We thank you for bringing us through dangers seen and unseen. We ask you to continue to be with us, be with this council, God. We invoke your presence in this meeting. We ask you, Lord, to continue to watch over us as a community, help us continue to work together as one. Ask you to be with all of our staff that works for our city, our mayor, be with all of the staff persons that work for us, all of our first responders, Lord. We ask you to be with all of the persons that are present here in this room, be with their families, continue to watch over them, and continue to keep them protected. We ask you also, Lord, to be with our state government, even our national government, Lord. We ask you all to be with all of them, because whatever they do is still affects all of us. We ask that they all be safe. We also ask you to be with our community as we go through a lot of different epidemics with the drug problems we're having, people overdosing and things like that. We want to ask you to please watch over and help us to know that we've got to take better care of our bodies and ask us to look out for each other, because there's a lot going on. So let's make sure we still have to be our neighbor's keeper. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have a roll call, please. Counselperson White.
Present.
Counselperson Zostovny.
Present.
Counselperson Maples.
Here.
Counselperson Hawkins.
Here.
Counselperson Gill.
Here.
Counselperson Vice President Samuel.
Here.
Counselperson Rodriguez.
Here.
Let the record reflect, at this present time, we have seven members present. Counselperson Yon and Counselperson Owens are absent. And Counselperson Yon did contact me this afternoon. She is very sick and contagious, so she will not be joining us tonight. And Counselperson Owen will be late. He's trying to get away from work. We have minutes for our regular proceedings, but we also need to make a motion to add -- we have the special meeting minutes from February 9th. But I'll entertain a motion for our minutes for our regular proceedings of February 6, 2017.
Motion to approve?
Got a motion, got a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Is that the Thursday, 4:30 meeting?
No. No, this is our regular council meeting. Thank you. Our regular proceedings, first. All those in favor saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Now I'll entertain a motion for our special meeting that we had February 9th, and that was in regards to our 1782.
Make a motion, we pass those minutes.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
I abstain from that.
Okay. You have an abstention. Approve of the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda?
Would you be willing to retract the motion?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you. Number 11, I would ask that be removed from the agenda.
Anybody else?
I have a motion. Do I have a second to that motion?
A second.
We got a motion and a second to approve the agenda with the withdrawal of number 11 under new business. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Leaving along the public meetings?
Claims to be approved, Heather. Do you like the regular claims or Park's claims first?
Regular.
Regular? Okay.
On top.
Total for the regular claims are $628,133.67, unless there's any other questions. I didn't have any issues with the claims, so if there's any further discussion. I get a motion to approve the claims.
Shall I move?
Got a motion, do I have a second?
I'll say.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Park's claims, please.
They are $55,295.42.
Any questions on those? If there's not any questions, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve?
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Do we have a report of the clerk?
None at this time.
Okay. Right on to unfinished business, which Heather, you're still up. 2017 OR4, an ordinance transferring certain funds to the same department is passed on the first and second.
There's been no changes in the last meeting.
Motion to approve the 2017 OR4 on the third and final. Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Heather, you're still up. It's 2017 OR5, an ordinance of additional appropriation is cast on first and second. And keep in mind, counsel, this is a public hearing for this.
Yes, and there's been no changes.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for opening up public hearing?
Can you remind me again, the 2 million?
That's for the East 10th Street.
Thank you.
At this time, I'm going to officially open up public hearing. Is there anybody who wishes to speak for or against additional appropriation? Please come to the podium, speak your name and address for the record. Okay, seeing none. I'm officially closed public hearing, and I will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve 2017 OR5 on the third and final reading?
I'll say.
Got a motion and a second, pass 2017 OR5 on the third and final. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
New business, Mr. Merkley. An ordinance changing the zoning map designation of certain tracts of property located on New Chapel Road and Uga-Sellsburg Road and fully described and attached Exhibit A from C2 to a C2 PUD.
This is a petition to rezone property that comes to you after a favorable recommendation from the Planning Commission. The applicant is asking for this property to rezone, a PUD. It is proposed commercial development just past the 265 interchange, and I believe someone is here to represent the applicant, Brandon Denton.
Scott Hanna, 603 North Shore Drive, Jeffersonville, Indiana, 47130. I'm a partner with Heritage Engineering. I'm here on behalf of Denton Floyd and Brandon Denton, and here to answer any questions about the development. But we were excited about a full recommendation at the last Planning Commission meeting. And like I said, I'm here to answer any questions.
I have a question. And I'm planning and zoning, I supported this, and I like the project overall. But I understand at the BZA, there was a request for a variance related to a gas station. Is there going to be a gas station in this location?
In that front, along 62. Do you have a plan there?
Yeah, see it.
Yes, they would like to have a gas station right here.
And why'd it go to BZA for a gas station? Is that because we have an ordinance that says we didn't want to have some gas stations so close together?
Yes, there's an ordinance in place that has the gas station clusters. So we requested a variance. The applicant was proposing a gas station with convenience store, which is located less than one mile from existing gas station, and didn't confirm to the standards set forth. So the next cluster is up by the Circle K.
Is there any way that, you know, I guess during the BZA, during planning and zoning, I wasn't aware of that. I guess I would have brought it up at that time. But is there any way we could move forward without that gas station there?
Speaking for the owner, no, I think it's very important to the development. I mean, it's a very nice, the plan is to have a very nice, I know one, like a very nice Speedway or something like that, but I know that it's very important. It's one of the things they have hopefully locked down to kind of move forward and get this thing going.
I'd say part of the reason why, a big part of the reason why, we changed the ordinance related to gas stations because it causes, it can cause problems with traffic. It's hard to redevelop these projects five, 10, 15, 20 years down the road, 50 years down the road because of fears of pollution. And you can see all along 10th Street and other locations throughout the city where there was auto-related businesses, mostly gas stations, where we've had a hard time redeveloping them. That's kind of why I wanted to give a background in why gas stations. We kind of tried to put some kind of, I guess, limitations or some community standards as far as gas stations. I'm sure that it looks nice.
Yeah.
I'm sure it'd be quality, as are some of the other gas stations, they're fantastic.
Yeah.
But when it comes to salaries generated and what's left over when the gas station's over, that's where the concerns are.
Yeah. And I think another, I mean, part of the case I made that night was, the Circle K doesn't really have a really good access. I mean, I think everybody's been there, you can't make a right. If you make a right onto, to, what's that?
Uga-Sellsburg.
Uga-Sellsburg, you can't make a left. So it's just, it's just not a great access point. So we felt like this really kind of added to the folks who are, you know, using 62 to get to River Ridge or their neighborhoods, and gave them another option. And is that a light, which I think we thought was important? And there's a, I forgot what I was going to say, but, yeah. I know we think, they really do think it's important.
Well, I'm going to chime in here too, and I'm with Ed. I was on, when we, I was on planning when we made an attempt to lessen the number of gas stations on this strip. And because you have one going in at Visine, then you have Circle K, you have one that's going to be at the New Kroger, which is in development, and you have one, Hux is going in at the end of Carrion Way. That's one, two, three, four, five gas stations in a one-mile strip. And what we passed was one. There should be two, well, two. You could have one at each end, so there could be two. So I really have, and I'm sure it will be nice, but I really have some concerns about. I mean, we passed as planning and then as a council that we wanted two, and now we have five on the corridor of Jeffersonville.
Ed, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't remember a gas station being presented to us at our planning meeting.
It wasn't brought up in planning and zoning. It was not brought up. I mean, there was a number of questions that was asked, and a number of uses that were presented, but I know I didn't ask, I don't think anyone asked in planning and zoning. The only reason I know about it is after the planning and zoning meeting, is a BZA meeting, and it came up for a variance at BZA.
So was the variance granted?
It was.
I'm sorry, I'm coming in late.
I think it was, yeah.
Yes, it was granted.
Does the BZA know the ordinance? Maybe just that the communication was not there for the
No, they knew about it. I wasn't there for the presentation, but I'm sure they knew about it, because it was before them, I'm sure it was brought up. See, part of the challenge with the council is, you know, we set the ordinance standards, and then we have BZA that, you know, at times looks at it and says, "end legally and properly." Saying, you know, "No, that's fine. We'll go ahead and allow that to happen." But then we hear from our constituents that say, "Why is the city allowing this to happen or that to happen?" And that's why. And I just brought it up because we still have a chance, we still have some leverage to maybe change that. In this case, at least. In other cases, too, in the future.
Is there any further questions that you have for him at this time before opening up to public hearing?
I have a question. If it's inappropriate at this point, counsel, what are our options here to prevent a gas station from going in? If it's inappropriate question, now we can discuss it later.
You can, you have to vote in favor of the ordinance as it's presented. Vote the ordinance down, or you can change the ordinance.
Can we just, can we vote to table, maybe even consider other options?
If you do that, you still have to act within 90 days.
90 days.
If you move something earlier, once it's on the agenda, it triggers the public hearing requirement, the council needs to act within 90 days of planning permission.
You know, I Out of respect for the applicant, who I know, I didn't bring this up prior, and they probably weren't aware that this was a concern, my preference would be to table in case there is some kind of wiggle room or other options that we're not considering at this time. But I'm sure where the council wants to go.
If we table it, it don't go back to planning and zoning, correct?
No, no.
So, but if we voted it, well, we don't vote something down. We voted in affirmative anticipation that it won't pass. But then will it go back to planning and zoning to where they can work their plan and, or not?
Start that whole process.
Over again. Okay, I got you.
Which may end up happening anyway.
But I agree with Ed. I think table would be the proper option now.
Okay. Is that your motion?
I'll make a motion to table.
Do I have a, I got a motion and a second to table. Any further discussion?
I have a question.
Okay.
Should we have the public hearing since it was advertised? I don't know if anybody's here or not. Typically not.
Keep in mind, May 1st, 90 days. May 1st you need to act, and May 1st falls on the line day, either the last meeting.
Well, with the table, it'll be on the agenda next meeting, correct?
Right.
Always do that.
Okay.
When anything is tabled, it's automatically put on the agenda.
Perfect.
I mean, and
Right, just delaying.
Okay, well, this time At this time, I'm going to officially open up public hearing.
Okay, I know that we do, and we have several deals that are pretty time-sensitive, so I know this will be a little disappointing, considering that we, not sure we've had any, we've had several public meetings with folks, and I thought we worked out a lot of details. So it's a little disappointing, I'm not going to lie. But I appreciate it. Thank you.
So I'm officially opened up public hearing. Is there anybody that wished to speak on this agenda item? Seeing none, I'm going to officially close the public hearing. Now I will, is there any further discussion on the motion and second that we have to table?
So, and again, I apologize for being late, coming from work. The proposal was to change the zoning, and it was approved by Planning Commission. And after the approval, they went to the Board of Appeals and got a variance from the restriction on gas stations?
Right.
Is that what the variance was?
Went to the BZA meeting afterwards, yes.
The Planning Commission's action, if I remember correctly, was a favorable recommendation was always contingent on any variances or waivers. Subsequent to the BZA took place later.
So the favorable recommendation was contingent on the variance being successful?
They were not, the Planning Zone was not aware that that was one of the, that that variance was being applied for or existed, or was going to happen. Because the BZA, Planning and zoning doesn't get a copy of the agenda for the BZA, and the BZA meeting is after the Planning and zoning meeting, it didn't come up in the Planning and zoning at that time. If it did, I would have, I would have voiced my opinion at that time, and it may have changed the vote.
I would, because we
Yeah, that's right, Mr. [inaudible].
How do we change, how do we change the code to prevent this from happening? Because we're not supposed to be voting on a use as a, as the zone. The zoning is not contingent upon what the end use is going to be. It's if the zoning fits the area. And I think C2 other uses fit that area, but there's concerns about that particular use.
I agree with what you're saying, except for a PUD. A PUD is totally different in that it is unique, and each PUD is unique, and uses are part of the discussion in allowing a PUD.
You're right.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries, it has been tabled. Mr. Merkley, we have public hearing and an ordinance changing the zoning map destination of certain tract of property located at 5520 Highway 62 from a C1 to a C2.
This is property that's located out on 62, off Carrion Way, behind the McDonald's at 62 and Carrion Way. Again, it received a favorable recommendation from the Planning Commission for that property to go from a C1, small to medium scale, to a C2, medium to large scale, to allow the operation of a dental office. And I don't know if someone is, the applicant is RSC Development Group LLC. I'm not sure if someone is from, representing the, yes, they are. They're going to know more than I am about dentists, so.
Good evening.
Eric Merton with Form G Companies, 5529 Rain Tree Ridge, 47130. Denzinger Dental, which is located on Charlestown Road, is the future tenant to this site. The only reason why we're requesting the zone change is because dental is only allowed in the C2 zoning, not in C1. So I'd be happy to answer any other questions.
Does counsel have any questions? I will for those, at the Plan Commission meeting, we did have the president of the HOA in Stony Brook did speak, favorable. They're excited. They said, you know, the developers of that property have been very well to work with. So that did come with a good rapport from them, so. If there's not any other questions, I'm going to open it up for public hearing. Nathan, did you have something? You kind of look like you did. Okay. At this time, I'm going to open it up for public hearing. Is there anybody here who wishes to speak for or against this rezone of 5520 Highway 62 from C1 to C2? Seeing none, I'm officially closed public hearing. Is there any further questions or discussion before I entertain a motion? From the, felt why he's here? Okay.
I'll make the motion.
What is the number? Eight. Got a motion and a second to pass 2017 OR8.
Do you want to make a second?
Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. We have Heather Metcalf, an ordinance of additional appropriation, and our public hearing will be on March 6.
The first one for 8,564 is the difference that's between what's needed and what's budgeted for the 4% that you transfer from the Edit Fund to the Public Arts. We budgeted 90,453, and 4% of our distribution this year is 99,017. So that's what that difference is there. So then, once this ordinance is approved, then we'll transfer that money over to the Public Arts Fund. The second one is for the Public Arts Administrator's Computer and Printer. I'm not sure if she's going to need all 5,000 of that, but she, you guys are, I guess, going to work on a budget at some point to kind of true all that up for the year, for all the projects that are planned. And then the next one for Contract Services for 1,875 is appropriating a receipt that they receive from the FOP.
Say that again?
Appropriating a receipt from the FOP. I guess they got a donation from them.
We're just acting as a pass through, I mean, to the commission.
To the Public Arts Commission.
Basically, it's kind of housecleaning, is how I term it or look at it, but
And I do believe, once you get it finalized of what exactly you need for the rest of the year, then we'll come back and kind of true up all the numbers of how much you need for supplies and services and things like that, so.
The 5,000, where did that come from?
That's out of the cash that's already in the Public Arts Fund. Yeah. That one and the 1,875. That receipt was received into that fund.
No other questions? I'll make a motion to approve 2017 OR9 on the first and second reading.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to pass 2017 OR9 on the first and second reading. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Heather.
The first and second?
Yes.
Mr. Wilder, do you have a report for us tonight?
52nd day of the year, and I've been reporting a lot of pieces in progress, much to many surprise.
All right. Is there any department heads that need to speak here tonight? Seeing none, we'll move on. Is there any public comments?
Yes, we do have two actions.
Here we have Mary Crabtree, speak to us on Cayman Run Creek. You come up and speak, say your name and your address, please, for the record.
Yes. For the record, my name is Mary Ann Crabtree. I live at 8 Lakeshore Drive, Clarksville, 47129.
Mary Crabtree, before you begin, do you all have
Three minutes.
Three minutes time. Do you need to keep the time for somebody else?
Usually Matt does. Maybe you should, because he's a little
You're welcome to. Yeah, I think he should.
I'll fulfill a topic. This is my first public topic.
Well, thank you. Thank you. I am here tonight as president, board of managers, Lakeshore Condominium Association. We are a community of 72 owners, residents located in Clarksville. Our property bounded by Newman Avenue, Howard Avenue, and it abuts the lake between us and the Clarion Hotel. In the spring of 2011, we were encroached by an unprecedented amount of water. At that time, we found ourselves in a position to have to hire a contractor to sandbag around one of our buildings and pump water away. What we did not know at that time was that this water was contaminated with sewer overflow. So subsequent to that, there was a meeting in this room on the 26th of January, 2012, which I attended along with other folks in the community who had been damaged by the water, and also Clarksville officials. It was at that time that we, I, were promised by officials here representing Jeffersonville, I believe the mayor, that indeed a new initiative was being put into place since the canal project had been set aside, and that it would relieve the drainage issues into Cayman Run Creek. And this was supposedly to be accomplished in at least a two-prong, maybe four-prong attempt. One was the replacement of the existing Cayman Pump Station. The other was a retention pond to be built at Spring and 9th Street in that area. Gentlemen, ladies, five years have passed. We do not see a retention pond. So I ask tonight, is the retention pond actually being the lake there between the hotel and Lakeshore property being used as a retention pond? So my questions, I wish an answer to. Has IDEM been notified that there is an official or an unofficial retention pond? Is there ongoing testing for contamination hazardous waste by which agency? And where, please, is the public signage that warns that the water is polluted? And in summary, please, we are a community of 72 residents. We're invested in our property and in our community. We enjoy our grounds. We enjoy having guests. Many are children. They like to go down by the lake edge, feed the ducks, watch turtles, what have you. But the stormwater and sewer mixture that is backing up into this lake But the stormwater and sewer mixture that is backing up into this lake is a toxic, filthy mess. And it backflows from the Kane Run Creek into this area. So damages as. Fine, the damages are not calculable as far as sale of our property, so I ask that you take the actions needed to fulfill the promises made to us in 2012. And I implore you to join with Clarksville and work for the betterment of the residents of both our river community. And I thank you for this opportunity to address you this evening, and I respectfully request that a copy of my statement be made as a part of the minutes of the meeting.
Absolutely, do you need to get Charles?
Great.
For the clerk, thank you. We have Greg Pfeifer, 428 Meggs Avenue, Kane Run.
Thank you, madam, chairman, members of the council. I had come before, I asked to be on the agenda tonight, contrary to recent media reports, trying to come here in goodwill on behalf of your neighboring municipality, the town of Clarksville. It's obvious that the will of the council is you don't want to listen to Clarksville or me, so I'm going to truncate my remarks. I doubt that I will take very long. As Ms. Crabtree just discussed, there have been chronic flooding problems in Clarksville over many, many years. The root of those problems is that the Kane Run pump station that is owned by the Jeffersonville Clarksville Flood Control District does not begin to pump until water is five feet above the level of the openings to drains that are connected to the flood control pipe in Clarksville. Last year, Clarksville hired an engineer to do an in-depth study to figure out why is this happening and what are the options to keep it from happening? And that malfunction of the Kane Run pump station came back as the clear answer. Now, flood control has communicated, it is anticipated through flood control that it's a $5 million fix. Flood control has agreed to contribute $2 million in bonds if Clarksville and Jeffersonville will equally split the $3 million difference. Clarksville has contributed to that. There are two options to be done. And so, we were sent to, at the conclusion of the flood control meeting, Clarksville was directed to approach you, the sewer board, and the redevelopment commission as the potential funding agencies for a Jeffersonville share. So that's why I'm here tonight. There are two options that Clarksville has to fix this. There is the Kane Run pump station option, or there is a separation pipe that removes those openings in Clarksville from the 96-inch pipe. What we fear is that if we do that, that elevations in Jeffersonville, particularly at 10th and Spring or basement openings of commercial buildings near that, become the lowest openings that are served by that pipe. And so, my personal belief is, I'm not an engineer, but if the pump station improvements are required to remove water from Clarksville when it floods, I cannot imagine that it won't be required to remove water from Jeffersonville that becomes the next lowest opening. That may or may not be true, but I would encourage you to get an engineer to verify that. I can only tell you that if that's true, then you and flood control could easily be facing a situation in which you have to build that pump station anyway without the generous contribution that Clarksville is now offering. With that, I will close, and I will leave copies of my remarks. The last thing I would say is, I think that Clarksville's position that it's taking is prudent. I've advised them that now that they know of that malfunction, they have no choice. They've got significant risk exposure. They have to do something. They have to do option one or option two. And they're going to do that. And we prefer to do it cooperatively. If you want to have additional meetings after I've spoken here tonight, we'll be glad to do anything you want to do. But I've told Clarksville, they have an absolute duty to fix this problem and to begin doing it immediately. With that, I will tender a copy of my, the full remarks I intended to make tonight, and I will leave the city attorney and the city council attorney a copy of those remarks with a copy of a 1982 Supreme Court case that I think conclusively demonstrates that Clarksville is acting within the parameters of Indiana law, even if it has to build option two. Thank you.
Mr. Pfeifer, hold up. You were taken a little off guard because this was removed from the agenda. Had it been on the agenda, you would have had a little bit of an explanation, so I'm going to go ahead and give you a little bit of a thing here. We've got in our packet everything that you sent over, that was sent out way ahead of time. Counsel, we're aware of what the issue is. Unfortunately, our attorney's been out of town, and the engineer that I need to speak to and other needs, has been out of the country. I talked to him this afternoon. We're going to have a meeting with him next week. We're going to take all this under advisement. We just have to have some internal meetings to discuss everything before we could. We were just going to say, take things under advisement, but it was.
If I overreacted to being taken off, I apologize. But if you will read my full remarks that I had intended to present, they say that I did not expect a final decision whatsoever tonight. I acknowledge that there's three potential funding agencies that you all need to confer with each other, you need to confer with your consultants, and so I fully understand that, and I did not in any manner expect any kind of a final decision tonight.
Okay, well, just to, we do not, we do want to work with the city of Clarksville. We didn't mean it to be in a negative action, so we don't want to put that forth.
If we can be of any, if we can share any additional information or be of any further service, please let me know, please let the town manager know. We will be glad to do that, as long as we are earnestly working towards a joint solution.
And they have your, they have this improvement thing from Stan Tech. We've got pictures, we've got the.
The last two pages of that clearly show option one, option two, and I believe Mr. Lanns is fully in the loop about all of that.
We just did not have to confer with our attorney.
Understand.
And that was the reason we did not.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. That will lead us to counsel comments. I will start with counsel person, oh, wait.
No comment.
I've been calling another one. Counselperson.
No comment.
Counselperson.
No comment.
Counselperson Hawkins.
I have two things. And Les, feel free to jump in and fill in any blanks. I want to make the other counsel people aware, since it's hard to catch everybody individually. Something that I'm starting to wrestle with, and you may be too, is the cell phone booster towers, I don't know the proper name. And they are not a gigantic cell phone tower, they are just more of a pole, a very large pole. And since they're utility, they go in utility easements. And I've had at least one in my district where they've just plopped it right in this person's yard. So we, and this is something apparently that cell phone companies are starting to use more and more of. So when you hear about this, and this is where Les can fill in any blanks, we are working on putting together language to at least somewhat control what that pole can look like. We can't really stop them from putting the pole in, but we can make certain parameters, put lights on, you know, make it a street light more looking thing and not just put it in someone's yard. So I want to make, did I do good?
You're right, we're working on a, four things right now, we're sort of holding pattern, because right now, I mentioned check today, so it's out, it's not the lead. There was a piece of legislation pending in the state legislature that deals with this from standpoint, limits local units of facilities, regulating these cell.
Cell towers.
Right.
So I didn't want to, if you all adopted anything or certain technicals, or adopt something that we've found, the state legislature, there's a, so, open the door here, I'll have the next, you're all next to me.
There were, there were a couple of places up north, Carmel and Fishers being among them, I think that we're regulating these through planning and zoning, and I know that that bill that he mentioned, it takes that ability away. I don't know if that changes anything on how we can do as far as aesthetics, but the regulation of placement because of planning and zoning, they're stripping of so that.
Okay, and then the second thing I had was issues, we are currently working with renegotiating, reworking our contract with the cable company, which is now, I've lost track, Spectrum, thank you. They, we've been functioning under a contract that's been expired, but it just continues. And we're getting, in the process of generally start looking at that, because I have many people in my district that should be receiving service, but in their view, in which I'm now regurgitating, Spectrum is dragging their feet on purpose because it's expensive to get to these last places. So I hope that we all, and you may be hearing the same thing, but maybe not because this is more new development, kind of hold their feet to the fire to make them, if they're signing a contract that says they're providing service, we need to make sure that they get the service to everybody. And Les can fill in any blanks there as well, I just want to make it everybody aware of that, because that's something that I've had several people contact me in in the last week.
And on that subject as well, the contract that you speak of is that the cable companies are supposed to pay a franchising fee of, it's a certain percentage of their net profits to the municipality, and there's a bill at the legislature for that also, that changes that whole makeup and limits local control again.
They tried to, our perception.
We seem, we seem to have a pattern of the state legislature wanting to limit local control unless it comes to taxes. Impose a new tax, the locals can do it, but.
They're basically the state legislature, they're more local, or whatever. We have a budget.
Sorry.
So we have a budget limit to respect the national.
Yes, it's an in.
So this bill that's, it takes that away.
Yes, quite possibly. It's.
But I guess we would want to affect to a next July 1st, but we already have this year's budget, so it wouldn't affect us.
Right, it's more than $100,000 or so, 100,000 to 200,000. Yeah.
And I think, is it not, it's over $200,000. Did I see that correctly? I think it's a little over two, so it's no small piece of change.
Who's negotiating that contract?
Not me. I'm not negotiating.
You don't want to negotiate another contract?
Is it the city or them, or the county doing it?
Correct, I believe it's between the city.
The city with all the, the, the rules. The one reason why it's taking so long is the cable companies have changed the meetings.
I just wanted to make everybody, just throw that out there, where that's two issues that I've been seeing, I thought you'd see, and that's all I got.
Appreciate that. Counselperson Owen.
I didn't come with anything, but I did want to mention to the comment from the Lakeshore apartment or condo complex, talking about the sewage getting into the pond there, or the lake there at Lakeshore, between Lakeshore and the Marriott or Clarion. I don't think that there's ever been any, there's no, there's no pipe that runs into that lake or that discharges into that lake, as far as I know, from either of the sewer departments. But there is a pipe that would overflow into Kane Run, and the permits are posted at the Kane Run ponding area, which is where those lift stations are that Mr. Pfeifer was talking about. I don't know how the drainage works in Clarksville, if that ponding area has the ability to back flow into that lake. I have no idea, that's, that's a.
The lake is the lowest elevation.
Okay.
Everything that comes out of those drains when it surcharges, eventually flows into that lake.
Okay, so that's, that's not anything that we're going to correct, though. Off the record, I mean unofficially, I don't know how we would ever correct that problem. But, but we do have permits from the state to discharge into Kane Run if it's necessary. And in 2011, that instance, it was necessary, I'm sure. It was a, we had, I know several people that were affected there. That was all. I just wanted to try to acknowledge your questions and concern.
Counselperson Samuel.
Just one thing, we're about ready to identify the utility boxes for our third round of painting for the public arts. And I'd ask each person if you want to identify a box in your district, if you have that. It needs to be one at the signal or traffic lights, because we can do those. If you just give me a location, then we can confirm that we can, that that's one that we can paint. If you'll get that to me, then we'll work on that. We're probably two months out, but it's coming, and we got to identify the boxes, so.
Do you have a deadline you need to hear back from counsel?
We have a couple more meetings, so.
Counselperson Rodriguez.
Listen.
Okay. I was contacted by Jay Ellis, and he wanted me to bring up to the council to see if we would be interested in being a sponsor for their Chili and Brew, which is Thursday, March 2nd. And along with that sponsorship, it is a table of 10. We'd have a logo on every table, and we'd have audio recognition at the event on their PA system that we're an event sponsor. Usually, we get a table, I think, I don't think we've been asked to be a sponsorship at the event before, at least that I'm not aware of. So I said that, he was requesting, I think it was $500, to be an event sponsor, so I said I would bring that up to you all tonight and get your all spots, if you all, if that is something that we wanted to proceed in doing, or just buy our normal table, whatever you want to do.
I've supported it up to a certain point, so I would support this. $500 is worth it.
Oh, I'll make a motion to go forward with the $500 sponsorship out of council special projects.
Got a motion, do I have a second? Got a motion, a second, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Motion carries, and I will contact Mr. Ellis and let him know.
I did have one more thing.
Okay.
If I can steal a little bit of time. And of course, I know everybody will run out and do this. My seniors in my AP government class got to participate in this month's podcast with the mayor. He came into my classroom, and the students got to prepare questions and ask the mayor questions about the city, what's a day in the life of the mayor. They were very interesting questions, and that podcast is now posted. It's about 29 minutes long, there's three sections, one of just the mayor, one with the kids asking questions, and then they brought me in at the end to kind of be the buffer between the two. But it was, I thought it was very, so the questions were very insightful, and the mayor did a fantastic job, and the people that did that, that put on that production were very professional. It was a top-notch thing right there, mobile in my classroom. So it was really good, and I just wanted everybody to check out that podcast, it's worth a listen.
Where you say it's posted, where is it posted?
It's on our Jefferson, and somebody can throw me a lifeline, it's on our Jeffersonville site, our city of Jeff site, it's also on our Facebook account, and the link to it is also on the Twitter. So any social media that we have, you can find a link to those pod. It's called Mike, Miked Up With Mike.
Yeah.
Maybe that's.
It was very good.
Was it done by the Jeffi, Pro Media?
No, this was done by the redevelopment, I suppose, contracts with to do all of our media.
Pro Media.
And they came in and did it. And it was nice, because some of those kids came and got to see how, you know, this professional setup. So it really was a good, it was a good deal.
I'm sorry. Counsel President Gill, when you contact Mr. Ellis, would you tell him to please get that into me this week? I certainly will. I'll be happy to do that. Because a lot of times, I don't get it in time. And then, one last quick thing, Friday, Ed Z and I, because we're on the insurance committee, we met with Kim and, what is his name with AHS? Well, the Michael, and then also with the consultant. Our clinic, our HS clinic is up for a renewal. They do it for a two-year. So we sat down with all, and we went line by line, article by article through that. That is something I'll have to go through Board of Public Works for renewal, but Mr. Merkley, we're not going, when you hear from me, you get the okay, there were some issues in that might can affect our negotiations with both unions. Some of them have their health savings plan, there's going to be a new, I guess, article in that pertaining to that, that hasn't been sent out. Yes, yes. So, but I just wanted to let you all know that that is up for renewal, and that will take place in Board of Public Works for the two-year, just to let everyone know that. So, anybody else forget to add anything? Okay, I have a motion to adjourn. Needing adjourn.